Evening, welcome everybody. Before you all came, we had a couple of cool workshops. One was on, that's how cool they were.
SAT?
Oh yeah, SAT, looking at SAT data and being able to track it. There's an assembly bill that may be passed that will allow us to use the SAT instead of the California Assessment Test as a measure that we can then use and track. And it may or may not pass, but I think it's really interesting to be able to use. If the kids have to take a high-stakes test, why not use one that they're gonna be using that's important for college, et cetera? Anyways, that's what that workshop was on, and then we had another workshop on some music initiatives that we're looking at in the district as well. Then we went into closed session, and closed session, we reviewed three claims against the district, and all three claims were denied by unanimous vote of the board. Okay, now onto the fun stuff. I would like to introduce and ask the great Annie Allen to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please put your hand up in your heart. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine of justice for all.
And now, the wonderful Amanda Guavera Blanca from McAuliffe is going to sing a patriotic song, and if I didn't quite get your name right, I apologize.
We should stand for this to write your name.
Yes.
What's the song?
I can't know it.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last belating? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, giving proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
President Barki, we really should get her name correctly because we may be hearing it in the future.
Exactly. I know, right? Wow, all I can say is wow, thank you. Wow, what else is there to say? We can all go home now. So we're gonna have some reports and recognitions, and please stick around because following that, we'll take some pictures and eat some cookies and have some fun. So the next action item is the Classified Personnel Report, and then the Revised Certificated Personnel Report.
I'll move approval as presented.
All second. Any discussion? Dr. Pulver, any comments?
The reason for the revision was some updated summer school staffing, so we wanted to make sure we got those before your approval tonight.
Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously for zero. Our student board member is unable to make it tonight, and so we will go on to the Board President's Report.
Which is you.
Which is me, oh.
Yeah.
Tina's getting me the clicker. Thank you, ma'am. I just gotta remember how to use it. We turn it on, and we hit the button. Awesome. So, this week is Employee Appreciation Week, and I just wanna highlight some of those appreciations that we do. We can never say thank you enough to the folks that help run this district and make this district what it is, and you'll notice that basket on the side, that's a basket that's brought around to each school to say thank you on behalf of the board and administration, school nurses and bus drivers, and day of the teacher, and classified employees, and day of the administrator. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and say thank you. And then, a special acknowledgement for a very special person who's here tonight and is gonna give us a report on her school, but I just wanted to highlight Ms. Annie Allen, who has been spectacular and wonderful in this district. Thirty-five years in Los Alamos Unified, do you have your 35-year longevity pin on?
I didn't have it.
We'll put it on the list.
From science teacher to learning specialist to assistant principal, and now, of course, principal at McAuliffe. 2017 Los Alamos Unified School District Administrator of the Year, but wait, there's more. 2017 Association of California School Administrators Middle School Principal of the Year for the entire friggin' state of California. So I think that's awesome, and she's gonna go on and compete at the national level for Middle School Principal of the Year, and... So we're starting a national lobbying campaign to try to make that happen. So we're excited to hopefully see that happen. I just wanna say thank you on behalf of the board. Thank you for being here tonight, and you're awesome. Okay, Dr. Crop, Superintendent's Report, please.
Thank you. First, I also wanted to say, oh, I'll say that at the end. So, summer school, we have a really robust summer program that we're really proud of, and summer school, we don't want anyone to think of it as a punishment. We are one of the few districts that still has summer school that's free of charge for all of our kids that need it, and so if a student is below grade level, or barely at grade level, or would just really benefit from that extra education, we recommend them to go to summer school. It's really a gift, and we hope that parents take advantage of it. So our elementary summer school will be at Los Alamos Elementary, grades fifth through seventh, so once they're done with fifth grade, they're considered middle school, they'll be going to McAuliffe, and then eighth through twelfth goes to Oak Middle School, and that's because we're doing work at the high school, but that's the high school program. We have a special ed program at Los Alamos Elementary, and we have our preschool at Weaver, and we have credit recovery at the high school, and we have an adult transition program at the district office, and that's just one of three programs I'm gonna talk about. We also have our Camp Fun in the Sun. It is our own kids' corner, and they do this, it's all day, or as long as you want, it's open every day from 6:30 a.m. to 6 o'clock p.m. They take three field trips each week, they do really a great program, and that's an example. So on our website, all of this is listed there, but that's another option for families, and especially if they're already in summer school, which is at LAE, they can stay there for the extended daycare after summer school is over. And then, we also have many programs through the Los Alamos Education Foundation, so they have enrichment classes for incoming grades TK and five that are, they're absolutely fantastic. They have incoming classes for incoming grades six through twelve, and then they also have high school classes where you can earn credits. They also have summer camps in the arts, there's theater, dance, and choir, elementary and secondary, and then they also are supporting athletic camps, and those are our coaches, or their assistant coaches that teach those camps. And so I've been sending emails to families, so if you get them every week and you go, "Yeah, you sent this," so I just wanna remind families that I update it every week. So as we, the links are getting more live, and we've added and made changes, and so if you can take a look at it, but the camps are really great, so I just wanna thank the board, I feel really blessed to work in a district that still supports a summer program for all kids, so, thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Crop. This next item makes me proud and sad all at the same time. I'd like to call Joe and Anna Wocheck to come up to the podium, along with ROP Fire Instructor Steve Erickson. This is on behalf of Karen Wocheck, Explorers for Life Association, and you may all remember that...
Kevin.
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 Did I say Kevin?
You said Karen.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kevin. You may all remember Kevin was a firefighter, I think it was called a hotshot firefighter, is that right? And lost his life a few years ago in a courageous battle, and we just wanna honor his parents.
So, they also named a portion of a freeway after your son, and they've done some amazing events, but there isn't enough that we can do for the service that he gave, and he was just telling me that even on the funeral procession, they went in front of Los Alamos High School, and so he was an amazing griffin. We're all really proud, and obviously so sorry for your loss, but thank you, and you're being recognized tonight for a huge generous donation on behalf of your son, and so, but next, I'm gonna call up the teacher of the program that received the donation, so Steve, if you'd like to say a few things.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wocheck, if you guys saw Only the Brave, the movie, his son was in that, and kinda chokes me up here, just talking about, he's a fellow firefighter, we're all brothers in real life, so, chokes me up a little bit just to talk about that part. But he was generous enough to start a campaign to help out all the firemen that wanna be firemen, and he is generous enough to donate. I didn't wanna exaggerate, so I only said it was like $20,000 worth of stuff, but he donated $40,000 worth of stuff.
Wow.
We started adding it up, and I go, gee, I underrated that, I was like, brand new, it wasn't just like he gave us junk, he gave us top-of-the-line stuff, and it's greatly appreciated, and thank you very much.
So, there's really not enough that we could say or do to thank the family for his son's service, and thank him for continuing the memory. It's a wonderful memory, and I hope it will offer you a little bit of peace, and I just wanna say on behalf of the board and the school, thank you, thank you for being here, thank you for your support of the fire program. So this says the Los Alamos Unified School District Board of Education and Administration, appreciate Kevin Wocheck, Explorers for Life Association, for the generous donation to the Los Al High School Fire Tech Program.
Thank you all for having us here, and I wish I could take credit for this huge donation. It wasn't just me, we started the Kevin Wocheck Explorers for Life Association right after we lost Kevin. Anna said, my wife Anna, Kevin's mom, said, "No, we gotta do something, we gotta pay it forward." So, we put this organization together, we have a really good board, we have great sponsors from across the nation. To date, we've donated about $220,000, $230,000 of the gear, excuse me, it took two, gear and scholarships to firefighters, mostly fire explorers, that's what we key on, and the reason that we came back to Los Al High School is because all three of our children went to McGaw, and McAuliffe, and Los Al, so it was a natural fit. And there's a lot of fire explorers in that program, so it was a perfect fit. So, it was not me, I wish I could say I wrote that check, but it wasn't me, it was our organization, and it's a 501(c)(3), and if you wanna see more about it, it's called explorersforlife.org is what it is on the website, and we kind of coined a little phrase because Kevin was one of the 19 Granite Mountain Hotshots, Hotshot Firefighters, and basically, Kevin ran four years cross-country at Los Al, he was comfortable being uncomfortable, and hotshots are comfortable being uncomfortable, they sleep in the dirt and eat crappy food, and it's not a fun job. So, we coined a little phrase that says, "Be a hotshot in everything you do," and that's what we're trying to do right now, be a hotshot in everything we do. So thank you guys for having us.
Okay, Dr. Crop, now I think you have an introduction to make.
I do. So, it is my pleasure to make a special introduction tonight, and so if I could have Jean Marie Daguerre, come join me, come on up. So, I'm gonna read this because I'm getting to know her, and you'll see why. I'm excited to share that we have selected Jean Marie Daguerre to be the new Coordinator of Child Development Center, beginning July 1st. Jean Marie is currently the Early Childhood Program Supervisor for Capistrano Unified, and has devoted her career to early childhood education for over 20 years. She is passionate about the education and development of young children. She has been a preschool supervisor and manager in both private and public early childhood education programs, and has worked at Saddleback Community College as an assistant manager of their Child Development Center. Jean Marie earned her bachelor's degree in child development from California State University Fullerton, and a master's degree in early childhood education from Capella University. She is married, what she said is to her best friend, and what I love is she gave us her husband's email first, I can't remember how we got it, so he didn't realize, I have to tell a little story on you, I don't think he realized that the email was going back to me and Dr. Pulver, maybe he did, and he goes, "It's nice to know I'm her best friend." That was great! So, but she describes it, she says that she is married to her best friend Keith, and together they have three children, Caroline at Long Beach State, William, who is a freshman in high school, and Connor, who is an eighth grader, as a former softball player, so she'll have to come to some of our games. She understands the power of having children connected to activities outside of school, and strives to provide this for her children. In her spare time, Jean Marie is an avid fan at her children's sporting events, loves being outdoors, baking, that's good, that's good, Jean Marie. We will, no, no, I'm sure we'll have time. We did not miss her cookies, there's lots of time ahead. And rooting for the Dodgers, Jean Marie comes from a family of educators and is excited to join the Los Al family. She is eager to meet the children, families, and staff of our preschool program, while let her speak for herself. So it gives me great pleasure to introduce Jean Marie Daguerre.
Thank you so much for having me, I'm so thrilled to become a part of the Los Al family, and just very excited to get to know the children and families in the preschool program, and my new staff. I'm very excited to get to know all of you, and just be a part of this. Everybody that I've spoken to, that I've told I'm coming to Los Al, has just had incredible things to say about the district, that what a great culture and sense of community, and just really looking forward to being a part of it all. So, I did bring my fan club, my husband Keith.
Come on up.
Come on.
Yeah.
My son Connor, William, my other son, Caroline, my daughter, and my mom and dad came all the way from Palm Desert, so...
Oh, yeah!
So, my dad is very proud, you can see. So, thank you for having us, very excited.
And now I'm gonna call on Dr. Crop to introduce our award-winning principal at our award-winning school, to give an award-winning report.
There you go, and thank you, and so tonight is the McAuliffe Report, and so Annie, come on up and tell us all the great things about McAuliffe.
Good evening, Board of Education, District Office Administration, parents, teachers, students, I'm so happy that you're here this evening, and I'm happy to be speaking with you all about some of the things that have been going on at McAuliffe this year. Interestingly enough, most of my presentation will be in pictures, there's not a whole lot that I have typed out, just a few key things, and so board members and everyone else, I'm hoping that you'll get a sense of how we enable all of our teachers and our students and everyone to lead and teach by your board goals, because they're not really defined in here, but I think you'll see a common thread. So here we go. As you can see, the eagle is our mascot, and look at those beautiful kids, aren't they fabulous? Yeah, okay. I think it's important, though, to share with you what our vision and our inspiration is, and this is systemic. We believe that all students can achieve, and that failure is truly not an option. We address the academic and social-emotional needs of our students. You know how the real estate people say, "Location, location, location," we say, "Connection, connection, connection." Our eyes do light up when our students enter our classrooms, we're their biggest fans, and we will do anything to help them. We strive to exhibit kindness and compassion to our entire school community, and for those who struggle, and sometimes those kids that drive us a little crazy, we run to those kids because they need us most of all. Why we come to work each day, I wanna share this with you, this is a display in front of the office. At the beginning of the school year this year, I asked teachers to find a student that inspired them to come to work each day, to tell them that, and then immediately after, take their picture, and so they did. We have a lot of pictures on campus of our kids, and this also illustrates our theme, which is a little unusual, however, I like it, and I think everybody else does, too. I am a huge fan of this band called the Foo Fighters, and they sing this song called, "It's Times Like These," and the lyrics of this song is particularly moving to all of us. It's times like these, every year as educators, we learn to live again, love again, and give and give again, and we have taken that into our hearts and shared that with our students. In addition to that, the lead singer is my inspiration, and so this year in October, well, well, I got to meet him. I won a contest on K-Rock, and I told him all of the great things about McAuliffe Middle School, and then we hugged it out.
That's great.
Anyway, welcome to McAuliffe, look at the kid on the left, okay? This is why I love middle school, everyone. This is at our sixth-grade ice cream social that our wonderful PTA puts on every year, the kids had a ball, and that was one way to welcome our new kids to McAuliffe. Now I'm gonna talk about academics, because we do passionately pursue academic excellence for all of our kids. The next few slides are gonna show you that. This is a picture of a seventh-grade core classroom, as you can see, one of our signature practices is being discussed, depth and complexity. It's also a piece of instructional networking. If we want those district signature practices to become systemic in all classrooms, instructional networking is the way to go, and it's been very successful. Here's another picture, this is in a language arts corps, where kids are writing collaboratively with their new furniture, check out that table, it flips up. It's really great, it has made for more interactive and engaging classrooms, and we appreciate that we have all the new furniture that we do, so thank you. Here we are in math, there's a guy there, he's in the audience, his name is Brett Lines. Our math department does a fine job, and this is another example of using technology, the smart boards, and he's also illustrating concepts that we learned from a staff developer that came in in the fall, touch what you teach. When you touch the whiteboard, it creates that vision that kids need, so that they get the concept more easily. Modeling Monday is something that we do district-wide, here's an example of some kids working on one of their projects, and this is great. So Friday afternoons, I don't know about you, but most of us are really tired, not this group of students, they're math kids that work every Friday afternoon with Mr. Levy, our club advisor, and they have students from the high school that come down to work with them, and they just love math. This was them at a math counts competition at UCI that they went to this year. And as we're talking about clubs, we have a lot of clubs to connect kids, over 25. This is a history class, again, look at the furniture, that use of that furniture really changes the way you teach, and the kids absolutely love it. This is a seventh-grade history class, I believe, and this was a wonderful thing we did, to make a real-life connection with history with our students. Around Veterans Day, we had kids research a veteran of their choice, grade six through eight, most of them researched a family member, which was very touching and very moving for many kids. Then we created what we call a Hall of Honor, and all of the students, grade six through eight, visited all the artifacts that the kids brought in, it was actually a very neat thing. We even had some of those veterans come, it was neat. This year, we really wanted to focus on STEM education, we changed our sixth-grade wheel and added a quarter of STEM for all sixth-grade students, and then, of course, we have STEM that continues through science, through NGSS lessons, and we have STEM in the Project Lead the Way classes that we have as electives. And this is another example of some of the work that our kids do, motion, design process, NGSS, and those are STEAM there projects that they completed. And there are some happy science kids, aren't they fabulous? Look at them. And behind them is a spaghetti tower, they only had spaghetti and tape, and they had to make the highest tower that would be the best to stand for the longest time, it was actually a pretty cool project. And of course, when we get done with all those great academics, what do we want for our kids? We want them to go to college, so we're all appreciative of college days that we do monthly in classes, and here's an example of a bunch of our kids dressed up in their college gear. But we can't forget the arts, because the arts makes our kids' education so well-rounded. Here we have our studio singers, right Shannon?
Sound waves.
Oh, I'm sorry, sound waves, and they just did an impromptu photo for me the other day, they're wonderful girls. Here they are at the Winter Wonderland in Los Alamos, they performed there. Another part of our Visual and Performing Arts Department is art. Mrs. Sherry Tanaka is here with us this evening, she was named as the Seal Beach Lions Club Teacher of the Year, and was recently named Orange County Middle School Arts Educator of the Year. This hallway is her legacy. I know that many of you have been up on the second floor of the admin building, it's beautiful, and now she and her husband have started to go into the breezeway of the administration office, coming in on weekends to put up student art, and it's really fabulous. And here are some of her happy students doing some cardboard sculptures, look at them, aren't they adorable? That's one of the things I want you to know, I love these kids. Okay, music, instrumental music is a great program as well, we're trying to build that program, and I think we're doing that district-wide. But this past weekend, they were at the Fullerton Jazz Competition, where our middle-school jazz combo competed against four high-school jazz combos and came in second. I think that's pretty darn good.
Yeah.
And here we are with one of our crowning achievements, and that is the McAuliffe Musical. This has become a systemic thing as well for the last few years. As you can see, this is a scene from our musical, and look at all the kids that participated, amazing, and they do that in the fall. In addition to that, it is an interdisciplinary project, we have music, art, drama, technology, history, and language arts, all work together to make this a really meaningful thing. this a really meaningful thing. And of course, PE. Here they are, stretching it out. And there they go, running away. And this is a good time for me to thank you for refurbishing our track. Thank you very much, we appreciate that, and it's well-used. So, all of this good stuff that goes on with their education, what does it lead to? Results, okay? Good teaching, good test scores. We're very, very happy with our scores. We made growth in most areas and most grade levels. And for those areas where we fell a bit, we've analyzed the data, created a plan, and I can assure you that next year, we're going to do even better than we did this year. And just, uh, just to let you know, right now, 53% of our eighth graders are enrolled in Algebra I. We anticipate that's going to go up as well. Okay, student support programs, I'm very proud of. I'm certainly not going to read all of this to you, because I've told you this before, but our intervention programs at McCullough have really made it very hard to fail. Um, our DF list at the end of a given semester is minute. And honestly, 98% of our kids at the end of every semester pass every class, with over 80% of them earning honor roll status. I want to thank the teachers and all of the support staff that work in our intervention programs, and I'll just share a couple of my favorites with you. So this is something new that our PTA helped with this year. We are a school community, and our PTA, we are so fortunate to have them. Uh, this year, we decided to honor kids for their achievement on the S-Back tests. So we honored all kids who went up one level, two levels, and then we honored those kids that got 27 hundreds, which is just about perfect. We awarded over 600 medals to kids. And for some of them, it was the first time they ever got a medal. It was so moving, it was wonderful. Um, and our PTA helped to purchase those medals, and they were beautiful. Uh, and we did this at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. It was a wonderful, uh, assembly that I'm sure we'll do again. Then we wanted to add on to that, so we had Heavy Metal Friday, two days later. So the kids did a Google survey in their history classes, and they voted on different bands to listen to. You'd be surprised at the music that they liked to listen to. AC/DC, Led Zeppelin, they liked The Beatles, uh, Green Day, Red Hot Chili Peppers, and of course, the Foo Fighters. We had the big speaker out there that, again, our PTA purchased for us, and we listened to music for both lunches, and the kids just loved it. And we've had that successively once a month, until testing takes place and the kids are into it. And here's my group, and this changes every Saturday, but Mr. Bowen and I run my favorite intervention, it's called Principals Academy. We come in on Saturday mornings from nine to 12, and we work with kids, anybody that wants to come in, anyone who wants some extra help or just some support, we do that with them on, every Saturday. And so, um, you really get to connect and know those kids, and it really makes a significant difference in how they look at school. Uh, we goal-set, and we help them with their work, and we bring them doughnuts, and it's a great time. The other thing that I wanted to share with you tonight was about community service. Um, I believe that when you teach kids to give to others, you're teaching them a life lesson that will stay with them absolutely forever. And I have loved the way community service has blossomed, uh, at McCullough. Ms. Valerie Miller is in this photo with the Make-A-Wish Club, one of our biggest clubs on campus, and she has been, uh, a major factor in bringing community service and just having it bloom at our campus, and I'd like to commend her for that. And there they are, granting their third wish. Um, this was, yes. The third wish. This wish was given to a student who used to go to McCullough, Matthew Lear, and I bet you saw the video, um, that Bob Osmund created, and it was also in the register. And we were happy to honor that wish for him, and we're, right now, working on our fourth. So this is a beautiful club, and our kids, look at how happy they are. For the art of giving, that's what makes them so happy. I think it's beautiful. Uh, we also do other things. We give, we do a jack-o'-lantern contest every year. Well, it's not really a contest, we collect them. Uh, we give them to Miller's Children's Hospital, and this year, we went to Sunrise Senior Living Center and gave some to them. This is, look at them, our kids, the canned food drive. We did that at Thanksgiving to give, uh, food to the homeless. And this is one of my favorite projects as well. Staff and our PTA, our entire school community donated gift cards for some of our needy parents, uh, families. And we, in, in those boxes, are about $250 each worth of gift cards for all of those families to enjoy at the holidays. And that was a, a very rewarding, uh, project to work on, and I was grateful for the PTA's support. And so then we have another club called CJSF, uh, the California Junior Scholastic Federation. This is them, uh, they met and they went on a tour at UCLA. But not only did they want to do that, they also wanted to do a service project. They did all of the outreach, they planned it, and they implemented it. And they did a beach cleanup, just because, and that's exactly why community service is so good. And here we are at the Seal Beach 5K, 10K, look at that team. Ours was the largest team, uh, represented. And Amanda, who sang, uh, the Star Spangled Banner for us, uh, this evening, also sang it at that event. It was so much fun, and I'd like to commend John Grillo for the work he does with that And lastly, we have Abilities Awareness Week. This is something new that one of our new teachers brought to us. She is, uh, she wrote a grant with the Special Olympics, and we did, uh, a week of honoring those students who struggle. Um, they did a bunch of activities, the Helen Keller toss, um, so it was hard for them, of course, to see. Um, and then the Winston Churchill Challenge, and I can't read it, sorry, everyone, I can't remember what that one was. But I mean, there were all kinds of activities that we did, and that was Nicole Manley, one of our new students, who happened to bring that to us. So we're very appreciative of that as well. And then finally, I'll talk about facilities. Okay, so are you looking at that fence? I think it looks grand. I think it looks very good, and I'm very grateful that we have it, because really, this was the only part of our campus that wasn't, uh, enclosed. And I think they're doing a fine job, and anticipate it's going to be done very soon. Uh, also, our refurbished outdoor amphitheater, which we use that space so much more now that it's been refurbished. We have new lunch tables and new trash cans, and I'm grateful for those as well. I've been there 35 years, I think this is the first time I've seen them, and I'm so grateful. It's so nice to have those tables out for our, our students. And then, on the side of the 20s Building, uh, we've been working in, Sherry has been so great at, uh, providing us with some landscaping, and then this year, we got benches out there, too. Such a warm inviting space for kids, and our teachers will even send kids out there with their Chromebooks to work. So we're grateful for all of that as well. And this doesn't look so great, does it? But it's going to look great, that's our jazz band room. Our jazz band room is being redone, and it will look very similar to the jazz band room at Oak when they are completed. And again, we are grateful for that. So, thank you for listening to me. Um, I'm happy to be here speaking with you, and I'm proud of our school, I'm proud of our district. I'm just proud. Thank you.
Do any of the board members have questions or comments?
Yeah. Okay, Mrs. Allen, um, I want to highlight and thank you for saying that about 80% of your students made honor roll. I truly believe in the depth of my heart that in middle school, those students are still mastering their subject. And it's, why do we need a curve? Would they, do they know it, or do they don't know it? And they should know it well. So what a success to you and your entire staff and to all the students to have that high of a number of kids on the honor roll. It's not because it's easy to get there, it's because they have the support and the drive to get good grades, to master the subject, and to really learn it. And I think that's fabulous.
Thank you, Mrs. Cattulli.
Any other board member comments or questions? Now, um, Mrs. Allen, I know you have a Hero of the Heart Award to announce. We have a community member that, um, put in a, a request for a public comment on this particular agenda item. So, Marla, I'd like to call on you to come on up and say a few words on the topic.
Okay, go ahead, Marla.
Okay, so mine's written, um, because I have to keep control of my emotions, okay? I'm going to take under three minutes to speak about someone that I could talk for 300 minutes about. Annie Allen, our leader, our mentor, our friend. Annie, you've been the heart and soul of McCullough for 35 years. In every way, you are the consummate professional, incredibly wise and insightful. I remember when I first came to McCullough over 25 years ago, and I asked Karen Lovelace, the principal at the time, "Could you help me? I come from fifth grade, I don't know how to handle these, like, eighth graders. Could you give me somebody to watch?" But it, the question did not get out of my mouth before she said, "Annie Allen, absolutely Annie Allen." All of us have asked more of ourselves, because, because you have always modeled selfless dedication. None of us could ignore your request to rush to those students who need us the most. You've always reminded us that what truly matters is caring deeply about the well-being of every one of our kids. For all of your knowledge, and it's considerable, it is your beautiful heart that causes you to shine. You have deeply touched each one of us and made a tremendous impact on the heart, hearts of tens of thousands of children. Annie, you may be leaving McCullough, but your loving spirit will be ever-present for years to come. I thank you, Annie, for being such a force in so many lives and for brightening my heart every single day. You are our treasure, you are so loved.
Thank you.
And now that we got Annie crying, let's have her go ahead with the Hero of the Heart Awards.
That's all right. Well, I have two Hero of the Hearts Awards that I'm going to give out tonight, and I couldn't be more thrilled. You know, some of the unintended benefits of being a principal at a school is you get to make friends with the people that you work with, as Marla said. But not only the people, but the parents. It becomes such a wonderful school community. So, um, I'll do the first one, then I'll do the second one, and here we go. It is a sincere pleasure to recognize Barbara Ringhofer as a Hero of the Heart. For those of you who know me well, I give most people nicknames, and hers is BR. And so I'm going to continue using her nickname. BR currently serves as a McCullough's PTA President, and her dedication to our school, students, staff, and our community is truly unparalleled. She might as well be on the payroll, because she's at school every day, and I so enjoy working closely with her. In fact, since we are both morning people, we will often email one another around 5:00 AM. And if I don't hear from her, I get really disappointed, don't I? BR brings a high degree of enthusiasm, organization, dedication, and quality to everything she does. She has extensive experience and knowledge regarding PTA policies and procedures, as she was very involved when her twins attended elementary school. And thanks to her and her mighty PTA board, and they are mighty, everyone in our school community is informed and engaged in school events and activities. We are fortunate to count Barb Ringhofer as a member of our school community. Thank you, BR, for all that you do for our school and our students and our McCullough Is it okay if BR stays here while I do the next one? Yeah, would you like to? Okay. All right. She is petite, but she is large in spirit and heart. She is completely devoted to our students and will do anything for the betterment of our schools and our district. She is more than generous with her time, and what I love about her is how she loves her family with this unbelievable passion. And when I say that, she's going to know who it is. She is one of the most photogenic people I know. I am delighted to recognize Rachel DeMarco as a Hero of the Heart. I always tease her, because I say, "Oh, Raquel, you're so beautiful." Anyway, Rachel devotes a great deal of time and energy to our school. She is one of the most active PTA members that we have. Her hand is always the first one to be raised as a volunteer for committees, for fundraisers, for school activities, not only at our school, at Los Alamos High School as well, and when her kids were all in elementary school. I am most impressed with her commitment and her constant presence at parent education nights. She constantly learns for the sake of her own children and all of the kids in our district. Raquel, thank you for your commitment, your time, your energy, and your huge heart. All that you do is sincerely appreciated. And here's your family, right here. Would you like to say anything, Raquel?
Rachel, would you like to say something, or either of you introduce your family if they're here?
I didn't even see you guys back there. Um, hi, um, this is my husband, Tony, and my daughter, Amber. Um, I have two sons, uh, my son, Brandon, he's the eighth grader at McCullough, and then my son, Anthony, he's, he's a sophomore at Michigan State, so he'll, next week's his last week, so he'll be back in a couple weeks. Um, I don't know, do you want to say something? I'm completely shocked right now, I hadn't known, I, I didn't know you were talking about me. Sorry. But I'm, I'm going to miss McCullough. Mrs. Allen has been amazing. I think she's gonna, even though she's going to be retiring and moving on, that we will remain friends.
Yes, we will.
For a long time.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a short recess, but don't, oh.
Are there students? Yes, I have, and there's.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, indeed. Please.
Okay. So, now that I've done my presentation, and you've seen our Heroes of the Heart, you have to hear from our kids. And I want you to listen closely to their speeches, because it tells you what's important at middle school. They will illustrate that. And the first young man that I'd like to introduce is Luke Evans. Come on up, Luke.
Good evening, Board of Education, District Administration, teachers, parents, and guests. My name is Luke Evans. I'd like to tell you about my middle-school experience. I started attending Los Alos District in the sixth grade, and attended Oak Middle School for two years, now I'm finishing up at McCullough. I transferred in the school district, and I had to get used to a new lifestyle. My sixth-grade year was quite the ride. One moment joyful, and the next anxious. I loved the experiments in science class and got nervous about all the tests. I learned that I had to be vigilant to do well. My seventh grade went by like a blur, but I found myself being more social with my peers. I liked playing basketball during intramurals and making eighth-grade friends. My eighth-grade year has been the best of them all, mostly because I've made so many new friends and because of the new people who have joined my family. I feel so confident entering high school now because of all the skills I learned at McCullough. I feel like I learned how to be a grown man and a good student. Most of all, I will miss my teachers, because they taught me great lessons to prepare me for the future.
And our next speaker is Jake Petroff.
Good evening, Board of Education and guests. My name is Jake Petroff, and I'm here this evening to walk you through my middle-school years. I attended McGowan Elementary School through fifth grade. At the end of that year, my family and I chose to attend McCullough to further my education. To be honest, I chose McCullough because my friends went there, and, but I'm glad I did it. Moving to sixth grade was intimidating, but once I got into flow of things, I never looked back. One thing I remember was dreading was having a locker jam and being late to class. It seemed like this happened a lot, but thanks to my teacher, the problem was always resolved. Another thing I loved about middle school was the freedom. We could walk between class. We could walk between classes and eat lunch with whoever we wanted. 7th grade was a good year. Teachers were great, and so were the people. I loved the intramural program because everyone went out onto the field and gave it their all. I played every intramural sport that the school offered. One thing I wish that middle schools could run a sports program. 8th grade has been the best of them all. My teachers have been wonderful, but the highlight of my year has been working in the office and helping students and staff members. I like seeing everyone there, especially Ms. Allen. Mrs. Allen has been the best principal a student could ask for. She provides her students with constant support. She loves her job, and it should. One of the lessons I've learned over the last three years has been to embrace the change. Middle school is a new change for everyone, but you have to embrace that change. My experience at McCullough has been, has made me excited to start high school. I can't wait to learn new things and meet new people. Thank you.
Now, we will take a short recess, but don't escape just yet because we want to be able to take some pictures. And then there's some cookies in the back as well. Or two?
Yes, please. Okay. All right.
Next is Community Staff Participation. Colonel Houghton, update, please.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board, Dr. Crop, Cabinet. Seems like it's been a long time since I was able to be here, for this session at least, due to some conflicts. And you know how it is, you retire and then you get busy. This afternoon, a couple of things that I would like to update you with. I put the letters announcing the selection in the mail today, and this program won't air before they receive it. So, it's my pleasure to announce the recipients of our RHA High School Scholarships, the winners that this year's a $2,000 cash award for them. And the individuals who are getting that, first is Owen Pierce, who you're probably familiar because he's pretty active in the community. And then the other one is Ashley Tulia... Tulia. I'm guessing at how to pronounce her name, but anyway. So, I think they're, they both were prominent in the high schools, so I'm gathering that you probably should have encountered them at some point in time. The other thing that we had, had this last year, and we attempted to get some juniors to do this, and so we were successful, is that we've had a couple of student reps, and I'd like to recognize their contribution to our RHA Board meetings, is their faithful showing up. And so, those two are Molly Monson and Hannah Mancinelli. And like you say, they have been very, very faithful in showing up to our Board meetings and contributing as part of that. And the final thing is that May 6th, Sunday, from 10:00 to 4:00, is our big Rossmore Community Festival. It's probably one of the highlights of the community, at least in this time period, and it should be an enjoyable time. A number of the schools will have some of their music programs being on display, and so we're inviting everyone to attend the Community Festival. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I wanted, before I get to my subject, I wanted to say thank you very much to the school district for being the school district it is. We came here 16 years ago, and I managed the storage facility across the street from the high school. For all that time, we came here, and I did that job for one reason, is to get our kids in this school district, because the school district has the best college prep that we could see in any kind of a public school. And you guys have really delivered on it. Daughter at Cypress College, and she is getting ready to transfer, unfortunately, probably to UCLA.
That is a wonderful, wonderful thing. Wonderful thing.
It's her form of rebellion. We're both Trojans, so. Anyway, and our son is, he's a senior at the high school, and he's going to be going to University of Nevada Reno. We're moving July, right after he graduates, we're going to go up to Sparks, which is next to Reno. Live there, and he'll go to school there. And you've delivered, and it's... And I tell people, it isn't the high school, it's the district. It is... I remember when my kids were kindergarten, 1st grade, and teachers talking to them and say, "You know, when you grow up and you go to college, and that's the way it's been all the way through," and that's terrific. But, we're missing something here, and it's something the United States needs and Los Alamos needs, and that is, I'm old-fashioned, I call them shop classes. I guess you call them CTE. We need to get kids lined up to do things besides college, because college isn't right for all of them. I understand the philosophy of giving the kids a choice. When they finish high school, they have a choice. If they want to go to college, they can. That's perfect. But we need to also offer them some classes, where they learn how to use their hands, where they learn how to use machining, where they maybe discover they have a love for machining or carpentry or something like that. Because in my business, I have to hire contractors, and all of our stores, and we are a huge company, we have to hire contractors all the time, and we just get adequate people. We don't get really specialist, really good people. It's very, very hard to find them. And I think we're better to get people like that than from here, where the really smart kids are, where the ones with the good math, who know how to, who could learn how to run these machines and produce really good stuff, build really gorgeous houses and stuff. Let other people do the adequate stuff, let our kids be the ones who do the really, really nice stuff, and give them a place to start from. So, I'd like to see some more classes like that, some kind of classes, not away from campus, but something they can see at school. I understand there's ROP and things, but you know, this is something that... Oh, I'm out of time.
No, you're good. You're good.
I'd just love to see that offer to the kids, and you know, and thank you very much for the education for our kids. It's been worth every second of being a storage guy.
Thank you for being a storage guy, and thank you for your kind words, and I think a lot of what you say is true. And it's not an agendized item, so we can't really have a discussion about it, but I'd love for you to email me, and my email is public, and love to sit down and sip a cup of coffee and chat about it, for sure.
Ms. Tanaka was here. She was here earlier, and she was telling me her husband was just about crying when they closed the wood shop at the school, and you know, because he was a cabinet maker. And we need real, serious people like that, the real good ones. And I think we could produce them.
Yep, yep. Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Crop. My name is Jesus Cabrera. I am Senior Manager of Sports and Programs for Special Olympics Southern California. I oversee all of our school partnerships here in Orange County, and I have the distinct honor tonight of recognizing McCullough Middle School as a Unified Champion School. Unified Champion Schools is our strategy to work with schools to promote the ideals of acceptance and inclusion of all students on their campuses, and we do this through three distinct areas. Unified sports, where we bring students with and without intellectual disabilities together to train and compete equally on a sports team. Whole-school engagement, where we raise awareness of people that may have different abilities than one another. And inclusive youth leadership, where we foster the leadership potential in students through finding their voice and providing meaningful involvement. McCullough has done a great job this school year, and it is my distinct honor to present them with a banner tonight.
Thank you.
I don't know if you want to pause for a quick picture.
Stacy, let's take one. And Nicole, do you want to say anything?
Go ahead.
Yeah, come on.
Yeah. My name is Nicole Mamley, and I'm the SDC teacher at McCullough Middle School. I've also worked at McGaw and Oak and have taught ESY for about the past four or five years. So, my passion for the students I work with runs incredibly deep, and so when the opportunity came to take students to be fans in the stands at Special Olympics Regional Games, I jumped on it. This is the third year that I've run the Best Buddies Program at McCullough, and we've had it between 80 and 100 students every year, and take a handful of them to the Special Olympics. And so, I was fortunate enough this year with the help of Mrs. Allen to create an Abilities Awareness Week at McCullough, where each day of the week, we learned about a different disability, a famous person with that disability, so the students understand that people with disabilities can grow up and do amazing things and have very full lives. And then at the end of the week, we had, as you saw in the pictures, some activities to learn what it might be like to have a disability, but that it's still with some help from resources, that you can still get things accomplished. And we had over 400 students participate in those lunch activities, and all students made a pledge to respect all of the students at McCullough and those with differing abilities. So, I'm really proud and honored that we became a Unified Champion School and hope to continue that in the years to come. Thank you.
We'll grab a quick picture, and then we'll continue on with the movie, with the movie, with the meeting.
That was awesome. Yes.
Presentation of textbooks. Mrs. Reed.
Mr. President, thank you. Tonight, we're really excited after months of work with a very large elementary team of about 36 teachers and three administrators. We're bringing forth teacher-created materials, history, social science, possibility for adoption forward, and so it'll be that program, which is a little different than a typical textbook, which is really consists of leveled readers that replace a traditional textbook and a large bank of primary resources for students to actually have in the classroom and use, really aligns with our district's signature practices. And so, it will be on review here at the district office for 30 days, the full curriculum. We've also left tonight for each board member a sample book of each grade level, so you can look over. If you have any questions, will be available in the Ed Services Office. Thank you.
And this is for what grades now?
Kindergarten through 5th.
K through 5.
K through 5.
Got it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, very good. Dr. Pulver, quarterly reports on Williams' uniform complaint for January through March 31st, 2018.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to members of the Board. I am pleased to report that we have no Williams complaints to report.
Excellent. Thank you. Consent items, 11A through double N and...
I'll make a motion that we approve all items, 11A through NN, and these are consent items.
I will second.
Any comments or any polls? I guess not. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, 4-0. Onto action items. We have three resolutions to read, recognitions, and I forgot who I gave what to what.
I have administrators, so I'm first.
Okay, first one.
And I have the teachers.
Okay. Mrs. Hill.
Deduction, it will be Dave, the third.
So, I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve this resolution, and I'll read some of the resolution. And the resolution is a proclamation as of the day of the school administrator, whereas leadership matters for California public education systems and the more than 6 million students that it serves. Whereas, school administrators are passionate, lifelong learners, and who believe in the value of a quality public education. Whereas, the title "school administrator" is a broad term used to define many educational leadership posts. Superintendent, assistant superintendent, administrators, instructional programs, school business officers, classified educational leaders, and other school district employees are considered administrators. Whereas, most school administrators began their careers as teachers. The average administrator has served in public education for more than a decade. Most of California superintendents have served in education for more than 20 years. Such experience is beneficial in their work and effectively and efficiently lead public education and improve student achievement. And whereas, public schools operate with lean management systems, across the nation, public schools employ fewer managers and supervisors than most public and private sector industries, including transportation, food services, manufacturing, and so on. Whereas, the future of California public education system depends on the quality of its leadership. Now, and therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Education of Los Alamos Unified School District, May 1st, 2018, will proclaim as the Day of the School Administrator in honor of many outstanding contributors and service providers by the administrative team in the public school of this community, and that the administrators of the Los Alamos Unified School District be commended for their support and contributions to quality education.
Excellent, thank you. I will second your motion.
Second that.
Second the second?
No, I'll third it.
Any discussion or comments? It is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyer.
Right.
Dr. Baki.
Aye.
Mrs. Hill.
Aye.
Ms. Katulie.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0.
Thank you, all administrators.
Yes, next, Ms. Katulie.
Okay. On May 9th, we're declaring that as the Day of the Teacher, so I would like to make the motion that we approve Resolution 2017-2018-30. Whereas, we all remember a teacher who had a significant positive impact on our own lives, and the guidance, support, and inspiration that teachers provide to students is invaluable and contributes tremendously to the well-being of our great nation, and no other profession touches as many people in such a lasting way. And the educators of the Los Alamos Unified School District provide the vital lessons that enable our youth to mature and reach their fullest potential, and it is fitting that our community and all Californians pay tribute to our teachers and their lasting achievements on behalf of our students and the future of the Los Alamos Unified School District and the nation. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Education and Administration recognize May 9th, 2018, as Day of the Teacher and the Los Alamos Unified School District, and activities will take place to recognize the Los Alamo School District's teachers, who are most sincerely appreciated.
I will second your motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Dr. Baki.
Aye.
Mrs. Hill.
Aye.
And Ms. Katulie.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0. Mr. Boyer.
I have the privilege of reading Resolution Number 2017-2018-31 by the Los Alamos Unified School District Board of Education Administration, recognition of our district classified employees, a lot of our unsung heroes, as I call them, that make things happen every day. Whereas, classified employee professionals provide valuable services to the students and staff of the district, and whereas classified professionals contribute to the establishment and promotion of a positive instructional environment, and classified professionals provide a vital role in the welfare and safety of our students. Classified professors also employed by the Los Alamos Unified Schools strive for excellence by igniting unlimited possibilities for our students in all areas relative to the educational community. So, now therefore it be resolved that the Los Alamos Unified School District hereby recognizes and wishes to honor the contribution of all the classified professionals to quality education in the state of California and the Los Alamos Unified School District, and declares the week of May 21st to the 25th to be the Classified School Employee of the Week in the United Los Alamos Unified School District.
Excellent. I will second your motion. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Boyer.
Aye.
Dr. Baki.
Aye.
Mrs. Hill.
Aye.
Ms. Katulie. Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, 4-0. Now, on to approval of textbooks. Mrs. Reed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're bringing forward a German 1.0 book for the possibility of a German class at Los Alamos High School next school year.
Perfect. I will move approval of that German textbook.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Ms. Katulie, did you read it?
No, I didn't read the German one. I might try the French, but there's no way the German would be like, "Oh."
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, 4-0. Approval of supplemental materials, Mrs. Reed.
Mr. President, we have four supplemental materials we're bringing forward tonight. Wonder, a novel by RJ Palacio, short stories, German 1.0 and German 1.1, both readers that accompany the textbook, and our Positive Prevention Plus, Sexual Health Education for America's Youth, the middle school edition.
Ooh, the middle school edition.
The middle school edition.
Excellent. So, I will move approval of all those supplemental materials.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Well, I did read Wonder, and it is a fabulous book, but I still won't watch the movie. Because... the movie because I don't like it when people are unkind to children. But it was, I was, my granddaughter read it, and she talked about what a great book it was, and she told other people about it. And one of the things that are real, it is about a boy who has a physical disfigurement of his face, rather an extensive one. But one of the really great things about this book is that it also talked about other people in that child's family and how having a brother like that, having a friend like that, being a parent of a child, how it is challenging for everyone in that person's life. And I just thought it was, what a great thing to introduce to our, I'm assuming, you know, fifth grade, sixth grade people would be reading it. And yeah, this has my wholehearted support.
Yes, and I didn't read the book. I'm sure it's wonderful. I did see the movie.
You're braver than I am.
And it made me cry.
Oh, yes, I knew I'd be crying. I was crying in the book.
And I don't remember who they are now, but there are some marquee actors in that movie, and they did a fantastic job.
Fantastic job. Oh, yeah, yeah.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Approval ratification of warrants. Warrants are the district's checkbook and all the checks that are written in between board meetings, and they're sent to us for us to review, to ask questions, and then approve.
I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented.
And I will second. Any discussion?
I have an answer.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Next is acceptance of donations. And we scroll that on the computer screen to see all the wonderful generous donations that have come in to our district since the last board meeting. And on the bottom of it is a year-to-date, which is always very impressive. And as you look through, there's small donations and large donations and various grants that come in from different companies. And we are blessed to have such a generous, caring, giving community. And there it is. So almost five hundred thousand year-to-date, which is pretty impressive, and we're very grateful for that. So I will move approval of the donations.
I'll second.
Any comments or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, four zero. Onto communication. Mr. Boyer, would you like to lead us off?
I got to attend, in fact, Dr. Baki and his wife and I, my wife, attended the Casa Youth Shelter gala event. And it was fun. I could sit at a table with a couple of older board members and get caught up with things. And it's always fun to hear the questions and the things and the comments and their perspectives on things. But the Casa Youth Shelter does a lot in our community for underprivileged teenage kids that really have all kinds of issues. And it's interesting to see how we're involved, and that some of those board members I met were really on the ground floor when that got started. I also had a chance to attend the Rossmore Open House, and I didn't get around to everything that's there, but I got from the TK area all the way through second grade. And I talked to about half a dozen teachers, grandparents, parents, and it just was real interesting to see the changes in that school and the change in those classrooms. And what I really, really noticed is just that our signature practices are really being put into play. And you see them everywhere, you see them in the classes. And I tell you what, we're teaching kids in kindergarten today is just amazing. I just, I just, you know, this is first grade? You sure? You know, it's just to see what we're doing at that level with students is amazing. And then I also had the opportunity to talk to a couple of brand-new teachers that I hadn't met before and get their take on things, which was good. And then also to talk to a couple of senior teachers. I mean that in a good way, and that have been around for a while, and to hear their thoughts of things that would have happened, what was going on, what was working well. And that was, that was really an enjoyable evening and very well-attended. Lots of people at the school. I was just amazed how many people were there. And you couldn't get everywhere. It was just, it was just a ton of kids and parents, and nothing but positive things from the teachers and from the students. So that was pretty much the highlight of mine. Great.
Thank you. Mrs. Cattulli.
I was able to attend the open house at McGaw Elementary School, and that is such a celebration of learning at all the elementary schools. And it's just a very fun night for everyone. I also had the honor to be at the Seal Beach Council meeting when the City of Seal Beach honored Dr. Crop for being Superintendent of the Year for all of Orange County. And I appreciate the City of Seal Beach for doing that. And I will say, I will appreciate the City of Los Alamos for doing it because it is on their agenda schedule also. I had an ROP meeting, and I do, one more time, want to reiterate a very big thank you to the Roycheck family for the donation to our fire science class. It was a very generous donation. And the kids get so excited when any equipment that comes in, that is obviously the top of the line and exactly what people use in those careers. So it really is a very inspirational thing to the kids in there, and I appreciate it. And to make a comment, since I am talking about career technical education, is that we do need more career technical education. But the one thing that we keep researching through the North Orange County Regional Occupation Program is what do employers want? What are they looking for? And a lot of the same, I guess, same standards that the colleges are looking for, they want, they want their employees to be able to read and write and communicate clearly. So a lot of the college-level classes are exactly what kids need to take, whether or not they're going to be going to college, because it does help them in their future career. It was also my pleasure to attend the Seal Beach Lions Teacher of the Year Dinner. They have this every year. Every school site nominates for within their staff a Teacher of the Year, and they're recognized, and the Seal Beach Lions do a really nice job about that. I also was able to celebrate longevity pins at both our auxiliary and Weaver Elementary School. I attended the Pageant of the Arts at McGaw, which is their big art production that's been going on for thirty-seven years, a very long time. And every year it gets better, and I just don't know how that can occur. And I was at a PTA council meeting yesterday, and one of the things that the PTAs do at this time of year is that they collect the number of volunteer hours, or they try to. You're supposed to keep track all year long. And to date, our historian for the council said that district-wide, they had donated a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred hours in volunteerism in our schools. And then we all started thinking about, well, did that include the time thinking about it and when you're on the phone? And so I, and I said, I bet you that is underreported by at least a hundred thousand hours. But by the same token, for the hundred and twelve, you know, a hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred hours that we do have record of, thank you so much to all of our community members and parents who donated their time to really make an impact in all the kids' lives. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Cattulli. Mrs. Hill.
Thank you, Dr. Baki. I wanted to start off with a quote that I saw this past weekend. I was in Dallas, and I happened to go to the Bush Library at that time, and they had a very large section on "No Child Left Behind," and whether you agreed or didn't agree with that. There was certainly a huge push, and education was very, very important to that administration. And so there was a quote, and I thought it was really apropos, especially since we're having our classified teachers and administrative recognition. And it's really something Dr. Crop says all the time, but it says, "Children need to be surrounded by caring adults in every part of their lives, helping children make better choices that lead to a healthier and more satisfying life." And that was by Laura Bush at a speech that she made. And I just, it really impacted me, and I just wanted to share that, and especially share that because as our recognition of our classified, our teachers and administrators, they do that every day, absolutely every day. And so I think I've mentioned occasionally, I see this, I get nearer the bus stop is down in Old Town Seal Beach, and I can see through the window, the bus driver, how he interacts with the children and the children getting on the bus. And it's just, you know, all of those interactions make a humongous difference. So thank you very much for that, and we're very honored to have incredible employees in this district. So I also had the opportunity to go to the LAE Open House, and it was spectacular, and I spent a lot of time with Principal, Principal Wilkins? Did I pronounce?
William.
William.
Williams.
Williams. Gary. And so, but it, and it was extraordinary, and he really talked about some of the things that he's doing at that site and some of the things about reorganizing the physical classrooms and putting classes together for better collaboration and such. And I thought that was really tremendous. I enjoyed having that opportunity. Also attended the Seal Beach Teacher of the Year and was able to be at the high school table, and that was just really enjoyable for me to have some great conversations with some people that I'd known a long time, and Dave Carlson was honored. And he's an extraordinary teacher and coach, and so that was great. Then went to the Seal Beach Chamber Meeting, and I enjoy getting the chance to go to the Chamber Meeting and connecting the school district with the community. And Dr. Crop did an excellent job of, in her short time that they gave her, just really making sure that they're aware and having that connection as well. Then also, it really was the week of Dr. Crop because I went to the Seal Beach Chamber as Mrs. Cattulli did, as well as I went to the RCSD meeting where Dr. Crop gave a safety presentation, but also unbeknownst to her, they also gave her a proclamation for being Superintendent of the Year. So I was really grateful that I had the opportunity to be there with her on that as well. I am proud to say that I was tweeted out by the Los Al football team for some burpees that I helped collect, and they did get, they did get to their million-dollar, a million burpee challenge. And so that was, it was pretty, it was pretty ni, nice to see, Coach Fenton says, "We tweeted about you, Board Member Hill." And I said, okay, I'll look at it. So.
You're in the burpees.
I had the opportunity to actually present a, or pick a ticket at the We Care event, and that was an event the same night as the Casa event. And I went to We Care, and it was, it's a local charity. We have a tremendous amount of local charities here, but they do an incredible job with families that have really hit a hard time in their lives in making sure that they are sustaining their, where they are able to live, what they can, that they have food, that their students are staying in school, that we make sure that we have a good connection there. And the executive director, I had, was able to have a conversation with him, and he says he's really connected very well with some of the counselors at the high school, and so that's how he really gets their information and shares that information. And Mr. and Mrs. Herring were there, and we all had a really good time, as well as it just being a tremendous event. And Mr. Lowenthal's son was there as well. So Alan Lowenthal's son was there, who has two students in our community. So that was a very nice event. And then a sad and still joyful occasion is that I had the opportunity to go to Irma Austin's service, and Mrs. Cattulli was there as well. And Irma served our district in many different forms and fashions for a number of years, and she was just an incredible, incredible light and role model. And she was the personnel commissioner, as well as she was a bus driver, and hearing she had actual students that came back and talked about her driving the bus, and it just, it was just tremendous. And so I was really, I was really grateful. Yep, I was really grateful I got to be there. So.
Thank you, Dr. Baki.
Thank you. Thank you, busy board members. So I had a couple weeks of some really cool activities in the district. I, too, attended the Seal Beach Council Meeting where Dr. Crop was honored. I had the opportunity to speak before the council. It's always fun going down there. Reminds me of when we spent a month or two using their council chambers. It's fun being down there. It really is. They have a, they have a nice chamber and a nice vibe to it. I, too, attended the Lions Teacher of the Year Celebration, and believe it or not, it was the first time that I've attended that event.
Really?
And it won't be the last because it's a great event.
Yeah.
And Karen does a great job in all her lions, putting it on, and all the, what do you call the little lions?
Leos.
The leos, serving the food and so forth.
They have the, like, the second-largest lion club in California.
Right.
And Seal Beach has twenty-seven thousand people as a population, and I think I am the only person in Seal Beach who isn't a lion.
They say they're the largest.
Yeah.
Oh, they say that they're the largest now?
What I really like about it, it's, it's not just an award thing where you shake somebody's hand and say, you know, thank you. You spend a lot of time. And so with Diana, we sat at the Los Al High School Table, and it was fun hanging out with the group, with Dave Carlson and Richard Smith and Richard Smith's wife, Mrs. Smith, I can't remember her first name.
Eileen.
Eileen, right. And it was really cool because I'd never spent a lot of time with them, and I got to chat with them and ask them questions and learn a little bit about their perspective. And we talked about school safety and so forth. I even made a connection with their daughter, who wants to go into some sort of helping or healing field. And so she's going to probably come down and spend some time in my office. And it, you, when you break bread with people, you learn about them in a whole different light than just shaking their hand and, you know, a quick, small talk, you know, hello. I also attended the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce meeting at Old Ranch. It's interesting feeling the different vibe at the Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce versus the Los Al Chamber of Commerce. What the Seal Beach Chamber did that I thought was cool is they always have like a little networking game, if you will. So everybody lined up and gave a quick shout-out to a business that was on Main Street or in the Seal Beach area. So you got to hear a little bit about each little business that was going on in Seal Beach, which was, which was really fun. I also attended the Orange County Board of Education meeting where our very own Chow Chang was honored. And he was also presented, I didn't know this, with a pretty nice-sized check, but I couldn't convince him to take us out to lunch afterward. But it was nice to be able to be there. It's kind of far away, and normally I wouldn't think that there's a lot of folks that come down to support him, but we were there, Dr. Crop was there, Dr. Pulver was there, and it was nice being able to support him. I attended the PTA meeting on the high school campus. First time I've done that, and what a great group of people and lively and questions and, and I think they really appreciated a board member being there. They were able to ask me all kinds of questions about what's going on in the district. So I enjoyed that and look forward to doing that again. I, too, attended the Casa Youth Shelter event, and it was their fortieth anniversary. And Mayor Troy Edgar, in his generosity, because it was his fortieth anniversary, he bought and paid for forty tickets for people to use, and his only criteria was, you have to buy a ticket, and then he'll give you a ticket, up to forty people. And I thought that was very generous. The entire Seal Beach City Council was there, so I got to talk to them, hung out with a lot of nice people. They had a phenomenal band there, and it was great to be able to support them. I attended, I was invited to attend, and I did the Bible Club at Los Al High School, and I was amazed, they have, on every Wednesday, the Bible Club meets. They have anywhere between fifty to seventy-five people that show up, and it was a very impressive group, and glad to see that they are active and doing well. And then finally, student board rep interview this past week. I don't know if we're ready to announce who we picked or not, but we picked a terrific new board rep, and I think she will be fantastic, and you guys will meet her soon enough. And that is it. Any other comments for the good of the district?
No.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.